6:01 PM on Wednesday, July 6th, I will call the meeting of the Lancaster City Planning Commission to order. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 15th, 2022. Was everyone able to review the minutes when they were sent out? Staff member Smith, because the meeting minutes were delayed going out to commission, were they included with the packet that was made public for the meeting?
For the packet of this meeting?
Yeah.
It was not part of it. I think I sent it yesterday or the day before yesterday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
There's no packet for this meeting. It was just only an email from Douglas a couple of days ago for the conditions of approval for Tennyson Drive and that's it.
Okay, I'm just asking to see if maybe we should postpone the approval of the meeting minutes until next meeting, just for public review.
Sure, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to table the approval of the meeting minutes for June 15th until our next planning commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chairperson Ritchie, a second by Commissioner Bame. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the subdivision in land development plan. So a request for plan amendment prior to plan recording for 15, 19, and 23 Tennyson Drive, and a request for modification to the SALDO to permit site and foundation work prior to plan recording for 15, 19, and 23 Tennyson Drive. Is there any staff comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a little bit of background to provide here. So the planning commission had previously approved this land development. I don't recall which month that was, but it was probably a couple of months ago that we took action on it and have conditions of approval, not all of which have been satisfied yet. Late in the planning process, it was discovered that a portion of this lot actually sat in Eastland Peter Township. So we informed the developer that they needed to also seek approval from Eastland Peter, even though I don't think any of them, the improvements actually, very little of the improvements were proposed in their township. They agreed to defer the land development, but it went through planning commission with some conditions recommended, and then ultimately the Board of Supervisors, who approved their land developments, who also added conditions to the deferment. One of the conditions that they added was that sidewalk and curb be provided in the land development to the city's specifications. You might recall that this, there was a modification for curb and sidewalk provided for this land development, which you all acted on and approved. So it put the project in a little bit of an unusual situation where we were then being asked to enforce a part of the ordinance that we had previously waived, and so the developer has been looking for a path forward through this conundrum. And I think that we have one. So thank you, Mendeli, for pulling up a picture of the site. So just to explain the reasoning, Eastland Peter noted that this was, this street was noted in the Bridgeport study that the city and Eastland Peter, and I think Lancaster Township, all took part in. It's an area where all three municipalities come together, if you follow Lincoln Highway out east of the city. And this is an area that has been targeted for transportation improvements, multimodal improvements. Now, this particular stretch of street, I think it's debatable whether sidewalks were actually required within the area or not. This is not within the primary five-minute walk distance in the plan, but nonetheless, Eastland Peter advocated for sidewalk to be installed. So moving forward, we are suggesting that the sidewalk be installed to help the developer get through this process, and they're willing to install the sidewalk here. We believe the compromise here is to allow the curb that exists there currently to continue to exist there. It's not a standard curb that we would install in the city. We install a vertical curb. This is a slanted curb. Mendeli, did you distribute the additional conditions to the planning commission previously?
I sent by email.
Okay, you sent by email, thank you. So I just want to pull those up and walk through. Okay. Thank you. So there are, so what city staff is recommending is that we amend the previous conditions of approval. April 21st is the date of the letter that we provided the conditional approval. And the new conditions would include sidewalk being shown on the plan in accordance with our land development plan, and include a detail that meets our specifications. Amending the opinion of probable cost to include the sidewalk construction. Amending the financial guarantee for the marginal increase for the sidewalk. Amending the plan to, in accordance with all of Eastland Peter Township's conditions of approval. And then finally, make plan amendments for the purposes listed above. For instance, slightly adjusting tree locations, showing the sidewalk detail, showing the planting strip, et cetera. So the developer is, has agreed to all of these conditions. These lots have already been sold, interest rates locked in, purchase price established. So you can imagine that they're a little anxious to move the project forward, given the delays and all of this. In addition to revising the conditions of approval, we also want to recommend that we provide a limited waiver to the developer to do site clearance, or site improvements and foundation work on the property. This is a plan that we received late last year, I believe, and it's now July. We've looked at this very thoroughly. We feel confident that even though we have not seen the sidewalk added to the project yet, that what they have agreed to and the conditional approval we've provided gives us ample legal authority over this project. And so we're willing to amend the conditions, or recommend amending the conditions, and then also the waiver of, a limited waiver for a permit for site work and foundation. So happy to answer any questions. I know that there was a lot to talk through, because this was a bit of a sticky project.
Do we have anyone representing this project with us this evening?
So, no, we do not. Both the engineer and the builder were all on vacation this week, and they did not anticipate having to be here for this. In an effort to try to help the developer, we told them that we would add this, that we were willing to add this to the agenda on very short notice and present to the planning commission as staff. They were also offered the July 20th date, but they, since they were very eager to move forward with the project, they preferred that we just present before them.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of commission? Hearing none, are there any public comments on this project? Do we have a motion for?
Can we do it together?
Yeah.
Both of them? Okay, so then I'll make a motion to approve items A and B, as noted in the commission agenda tonight for Tennyson Drive.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Hackett, a second from Commissioner Bame. I will call for roll, Commissioner Bame.
Aye.
Commissioner Dastra.
Aye.
Commissioner Hackett.
Aye.
Commissioner Ortega Brown.
Aye.
The motion to approve request for plan amendment and request for modification to SALDO for 15, 19, and 23 Tennyson Drive passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda, item number four, Housing Subcommittee. I don't believe that we have any action items tonight for that agenda item.
No action items this evening for the Housing Subcommittee. If there are any additional recommendations, happy to hear them. I know we talked about some other speakers coming before the planning commission. Welcome any suggestions, or welcome to email them to me and Jocelyn if you'd like.
The next item on our agenda is the Comprehensive Plan Report. Is there anything that staff would like to report before we move on to the land use exercise for the downtown and southeast quadrants?
I would prefer to maybe defer conversation to this point and instead email you some key documents that are finally done. So apologize for not having them to you before this meeting, but I'm actually very, very excited to share the work that we've done. So you'll be seeing the engagement report, and that documents what we've done up until January, end of January, and then also our Lancaster Today Report, which is our baseline's conditions report. And then we've also developed a document for a special forum that we're holding. Maybe this will just take a quick moment to explain. We are partnering with Franklin Marshall College on what's called a deliberative forum, which is an informed democratic exercise where you arm a group of residents with all kinds of information about a particular topic, and then you ask them to make some key decisions based on all of the information that you provide them. So in this case, we're going to, we've pulled together a document that summarizes basically all of the most important information about urban planning, and what we, why we make certain decisions, how we make certain decisions. And, you know, it's complex stuff, as you know, but I think the document is really, it's a great summary, and it's very succinct, but also deep enough that gives them some good info. So happy to share those with you, and I'm excited to say we have 33 residents who have already volunteered. We sent out about 700 letters to residents all across the city, and the goal was to develop a statistically representative sample of city residents based on city demographics. So we have excellent representation ethnically, racially, based on income, educational attainment, and demographic, geographic representation in the city across census tracts. So really excited for this opportunity. We're paying all of the residents who are participating. We also have a panel of experts, local experts who are participating, and we're able to compensate them as well. FNM is catering, providing coffee, filming, photography, a venue for this as well, and their Center of Opinion Research, for opinion research is the one that's helping to fund and coordinate all of this. So it's a closed event, because, you know, these are sampled residents, but I do hope that you'll see an article and some more press about that in the coming weeks. That's scheduled for July 23rd. And yeah, we're very, very excited to have this kind of cutting-edge, you know, exercise around the comp plan.
Before we relocate to the table for the land use exercise, is there any other business? And then does the member of public have any public comment that they would like to offer? Great, so at this time, I guess we can move down to the board table for the land use exercise.
And for anyone who is listening, we're going to be beginning a collaborative exercise on the comp plan, and we don't have great sound system arrangements for this while we stand around the maps and the tables. So I apologize for the lack of audio. Please join us in person. Check, okay. And then how can we create spaces that are enjoyable for everybody? So what we need is some colored markers. Let's pick out, if someone could grab, black, green, orange. Red, green, orange, and then red, blue, purple. Red, blue, purple. Yeah. So each of those will correspond to a different topic. So we don't need to wear name tags, we've got a recorder. Okay, and then today's session, I'll let you fill that out, Tony, that's page three. Date, location, organization, et cetera. Tonight, we're doing the southeast quadrant.
Yep.
And there's glossary, there's things in here that I don't think we'll necessarily need. So the first exercise is just to draw the city's neighborhoods as we might experience them. So how do we identify neighborhoods in this area? Recognizing that we all might, may not necessarily live here, but, you know, getting lots of different people's opinions about how to draw this area.
My parents have lived in this corner for the last 25 years.
Wow, so you know that area.
I know that corner very, yeah, very well.
Yeah.
How does that corner identify as a neighborhood?
Yeah, where do you see that? It's on Church Vine and Line, they're right on that little corner there. It's, because they have traffic coming in from Queen Street to 222, there's constant traffic. I always think of this, these two triangles as a neighborhood like north of Church Street, because they're closer to the square.
And they identify with Old Town.
Yeah.
They identify with Old Town. They don't identify with the rest of this.
Yeah, I think right up Church Street.
That church is certainly a divider. Just where is Old Town?
Right about.
Yeah.
In Washington.
And this is a separate one.
No, so these are the same, these two triangles. Yeah. Yeah, and I would identify that as Old Town.
Now, does Old Town get a grandfather or permission to do Airbnb in that area?
So there was someone who previously was operating there. When we adopted the new regulations, they were grandfathered in. So I think there's one or two, at least, that are operating in that area.
I thought so.
Yeah.
See, one historic home, which has been high Charles for Airbnb. I'm like, I thought we didn't allow Airbnb in downtown.
Yeah.
The idea that they were Old Town, and sometimes they get special triplets.
Oh, no, no, yeah, they still have to abide by the rules. But yeah, unfortunately, we, there's still some that are grandfathered in by zoning.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. But you can no longer operate in that zone, which is R3.
Without special exception.
Yeah, with variance, these variants.
Yeah. So this neighborhood, or like strip of?
It's sort of Queen Street.
Yeah, and it's right to the cemetery. Stones down and.
Do we feel like these two sides are separate neighborhoods? I feel like it's a big divider.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I feel like this whole section, line, Pershing.
Excellent value, whether it be Park and Palm.
Yeah.
The housing product.
Yeah, I was thinking, there's that one section that reminds me.
This is the city, one of the city housing apartments and buildings. And then there's the development of apartments that kind of extends.
There's that one section, I think this is it, I think this is Tech Central. Am I correct?
Yes.
With the Saka building there. But that area feels a little bit different to me, like just that one particular block. It's just kind of open as you come down Pershing, and then there's the community centers down there somewhere.
Yeah.
And that is what it is. I feel like this over here is a neighborhood as well.
Yeah. You've got South End Street.
It centers around.
The South End neighborhood, yeah.
Yep.
There's a navigating bridge.
So do you think it extends down past the school, or do you think it kind of cuts?
Probably titters out.
Yeah.
I mean, like, I feel like this apartment complex is kind of the core of it all, of this neighborhood that is.
Yeah.
And it probably goes as far as like Anne Street and this collective.
Yeah.
There she is.
Hey, how are you?
Well, darling, how are you?
Now, I'm over.
I was even gonna say, like, these vertices.
Yeah.
Good. Southeast now. Diamond.
Yes, man.
And then, do you think it cuts back around, Thaddeus Stevens?
This is Thaddeus.
Yeah.
So what are you trying to figure out?
So what we're, the activity we're working on right now is determining where we think the boundaries for different neighborhoods within the southeast quadrant are. So this is the South End Street neighborhood.
Well, actually, our neighborhood is this whole quadrant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do you think it includes?
It does include Thaddeus Stevens College, all the way up to King Street.
Yep.
Yes.
Green.
Perfect diamond.
To South End.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So that defines.
Yeah.
When you say quadrant, do you think like this corner of the quadrant, or does it also extend?
It comes down the end, all the way down to Tier. Does it peak in around? It includes Hand Middle School and George Washington.
The schools were a part of the neighborhood.
Yeah, because, well, we really work with the Lancaster Housing Authority about South Flannan Court, and right across from Washington.
So do you think that this neighborhood south of Chesapeake that extends down to Duke is different than your neighborhood?
A little bit different, yes. You have more single homes over here. You know, we have the whole apartment complex there, plus all of the schools, the elementary, the junior high, and then the college.
So Almanack, they kind of operate our area around the Franklin Terrace.
Franklin Terrace, well, we've been reaching their, actually reaching their residents through Lancaster Housing Authority. We work with their residential coordinator, and if we're doing stuff, they make sure their residents give flyers to know that there's stuff going on.
So what makes this neighborhood unique, and what makes this neighborhood unique?
Well, this neighborhood was actually chosen at the time, it was Sector 5 on the police maps. So it was a sector that nobody claimed, nobody addressed. So we took the whole sector when we originally started. Since that time, the sectors have changed. So I'm not quite sure which sectors we are now. For the most part, South End Street has been the dividing factor. The even side is considered, like, you know, I guess with the city maps and sectors, the dividing line runs right down End Street. So even when you look at redistricting, it's always the middle of the block, and those blocks are within the southeast area. These homes, basically Almanack, of course, are the affordable homes. Marshall Street and them, you just seen some houses being built there that are built up.
And it's a lot of single family detached in that neighborhood too.
Detached homes.
Bigger, bigger lots.
Thaddeus Stevens is getting ready to put some affordable duplex there, working with South End as well. So a little, I mean, we can get Almanack Avenue residents to come out about an issue within the southeast area as a whole.
Yeah.
But when we're looking at addressing the neighborhood, where But when we're looking at addressing the neighborhood, we're more targeted with boundaries.
Yeah, and then, do you think that Thaddeus Stevens being in the South End neighborhood and this, uh, apartment complex kind of?
Part of Court.
Yeah, being in the middle of the.
Is the center of, more or less the center of our neighborhood. Actually, as we always say, it's a two hundred block of Anne and Dolphin. And, I love this way. Like, sometimes we'll deal with Lime Street, even though it's not in our neighborhood, but there are a lot of coincidences and things that, you know, join us together, so.
And then, when we were talking earlier, we said that South Duke Street is kind of the divider down to Chesapeake, so this, on one side of the street, South Duke is one neighborhood, and then we would say that this is another, would you agree?
Probably, it would probably be more than just one neighborhood because of Hill Rise, Woodward Street, uh, actually, you know, Church Town. Does, I don't think it comes all the way down to Junianna. I think Church Town might go to Green and Irving and back this way.
Okay.
So they consider theirself a neighborhood.
Okay.
And.
So split, kind of at Green Street?
I think, yeah, they might include Woodward, I'm just not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
But they might include Woodward.
Are you talking about Bethel A and E Church?
Bethel A and E Church. You know, they call their neighborhood Church Town.
Yeah.
And it includes a little bit of Queen Street and that little area back on Polite Avenue, I think it's called up Polite Street. Yeah. They kind of call that Church Town.
And, so the Church and on that, the corner of Church and South Duke is kind of the, or no, where's Bethel is over?
Bethel is on Strawberry.
Strawberry Street, yeah.
So Crossroad to Mennonite would be on Church and South Duke.
Okay.
And they kind of, hmm, I don't know if they really claim a whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
But a lot of their, uh, a lot of their congregation is within.
You said this was two? You feel like it's two? What do you feel is the dividing line? Dolphin?
No.
Because you got Hill Rise.
Right, Hill Rise kind of separates itself. Of course, you have, um, Valerie, Valerie neighborhood. You know, um, Howard Avenue, they have their own little neighborhood. That, because I know, like, they kept telling us, we need to take Persian Avenue. We did take the one block of Chester Street. Because it had the same street guidelines that ours had versus all the other, um, neighborhood. They tried to get us to go Persian, but it's just growing too much to be as effective as our organization wants to be. But Howard Avenue here has their own, um, neighborhood group.
Okay.
And I think they might come over to Chester.
Yeah, that seems to be like a pretty, you have a lot of single homes.
Chester, Chester is probably, here you would have all your one-way streets.
So Rockland, over to Chester, up to Plum? Okay.
You can probably check with Valerie, but I think they do the whole Howard Avenue block from Lime.
So that's five, and then Howard.
Now, this is hand, we take that triangle right there, because this is King right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, where the Fairmont House used to be, right there on the corner. Yep, like that.
Okay.
And that used to be a voting precinct until they redistricted, so, everybody in that neighborhood voted in that precinct now. That has changed, so we have three different precincts within that neighborhood where people go vote.
So, so what makes this neighborhood unique from the others?
Um, I mean, you said the, the grade of the street, the Hill, Hill Rise, um, the apartments, and then?
Yeah, well, Hill Rise is a complex.
Oh, that's the name of?
That's the name, that's the actual name of the complex, is Hill Rise. Um.
And then Tech Central is located there too?
Well, Tech Central is on, um, to the, where is Pershing?
Yeah.
Pershing and.
I think it's right here.
No.
On Chester?
Wait, 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 is it Pershing, wait, Tech Central is here on.
Pershing and Howard, I want to say.
No, no.
I'm thinking that street comes next to Saka, Saka's on the corner, and that's Lime?
Saka is Lime, and that is Pershing and Green, Green.
I'm thinking Locust.
Locust is over one block.
It's, um, between.
This is Locust, so it's right here.
Yeah, it's between Locust and Chester.
Well, that's where Saka and the radio station is.
Yeah.
Tech Central is there.
Yeah, it's that building.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is the, um, community center, right? The, um.
Saka's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the development preparation.
Yeah.
Do we want to move on?
Yeah, we can move on, I mean, this is kind of conceptual, gets us thinking about how the different parts of that quadrant connect to each other and, like this one.
Sorry, sorry, but the purpose of the meeting is to.
Uh, so this is just a, a land use exercise for the comprehensive plan, um, so this is, I think, the third one of these that we're doing?
Yeah, we're just, the planning commission is doing one for all of the quadrants of the city, or I should say all of the planning regions, which is mostly northwest, southwest, southeast.
The quadrants.
And then the, the downtown separately.
Oh, okay.
And so we get to think through all the different, um, aspects of a neighborhood, like parks and housing and transportation, and the things that we want to either see added or that should remain the same. So, you've arrived at the perfect meeting, I mean, literally the perfect meeting.
I got word they were talking about the southeast, I said, I need to show up, oh, another meet, and I need to go.
So, this next exercise is for, um, housing identification. So what types of housing do residents need? Using the red marker, please identify areas on the map where new or expanded housing options are needed, and mark on the map with a number. Where new housing is placed is up to you and your group. Please describe the types of housing you would, you believe would be beneficial for Lancaster in general, as well as any specific ideas by location as depicted on the map with a corresponding number.
New housing, what kind of land lot does it deserve? Not a lot of space between.
Well, I think of this parcel with the, uh, that's where the Chinese restaurant.
Yeah.
Was.
Okay.
And that's kind of, I mean.
Don't you do it. Pass, 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 and. Do a pass. Pass, 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 and. Man, you practice a lot of people. Since they changed, they go pay the bill after. So it's really made all stations make a thing about. Wow, flex, I don't know how many people they hired. So I don't know, but in my thinking of. It all is based. I. Especially. Don't think of. And you need to include that in. Take everything that you see as building housing, knowing you're an affordable housing, you need to give you more. But we need that economic sense that really missing is. We have every field of, like a lot of people don't think about it, but Southie and neighborhood, we think about it all the time. density, you know, say making it denser, we have one block, Martinburg has uh forty three buildings. Each buildings has six units that have two to three bedrooms. So when you talk about density, you look at Almanack Avenue and on a house that they have, Clairemont Avenue. But then uh Clairemont fall, they start selling some of their house and I think they don't let each of you see them a time. And they started giving people opportunity to buy them, which is looking at a lot of density everywhere. So that's something that comes up a lot, Martin spec. About density. And you said something about off a very important. He said two things, we can use the walk, or when we build, build down, then put a part in. But uh, you know that you have to go up, you know, there's no other way for you to go in. Don't have, as you said, any towers within the city, but church street tower and barns. And I mean, everything else is leased for you for less. Just the schools. And a lot of the schools. I'm gonna say mostly in Washington. For the city is a nice. Maybe for the eight. Maybe support staff. Yes. So. Yes, yes, a lot of the support staff and. New kids, stuff like that. But yeah. Always. I still remember looking and acting. And my hands and then put down there. I've a better school economic development because that's fair. I mean, it is town. I'm talking about. Yes. Yeah. Here they have the track. You know. The track is not. The first layer of parking is ground level, second layer. So they use that for parking, I mean, yeah. Right, right, they have. So the thing is, if it's not a school. How do they adjust parking? We have a lot of parking for you to be able to get here, park along. On that, that speed is never happy. So. Yeah, it's right, so I'm not saying that it wouldn't make sense to put out, but it's better. Yeah. Yes. When you go, they bought all the land. So. Still. On the old barn hall, you know, they own all of that on that side of. Comes to the wheel. Down from there to make all that, but it hasn't turned any. Uh, we hear it's a big. Yes.
Do the barware. So, um, if you want to come back to this, this particular topic and something flexible, please, still on that red marker, definitely do that. Um, cause I think you guys are making some good points here, you know, um, the next topic is like that, if we have a question yet, the whole of this idea that. And uh, this area of. Jump that on a belt. Cause it seems to be the. Everything, yeah, so like bike, head, mic, blow.
I mean, that's so.
Was there particularly use mine, which is like dogs.
No. I mean.
Where is.
There's some like. Other like.
Access to.
Exactly.
Perfect. So they. That'd be. Why is. Uh. There, there's people back here.
Yes.
There's actually a few folks back there.
Are they. Nothing. Um, that is where church town. Being experienced, they're like. That museum, they would not want to take place there, I think, um. But they there is in front of those buildings. Queen Street, so. Back there, so, but. A lot of stuff that goes on, a lot of people trying to get it, but there definitely something could happen there. I mean, I think something could happen there, I would like to see. These residents around the church are very active. So, you know, just get some input from them and something you wanna go there, should it be out, should it be that company? Should, you know, what should it be?
So it sounds like you think that could be a redevelopment.
Hey, right, definitely could be a redevelopment, I don't know where, definitely. There's awareness thing if it's online, but definitely something could happen. More as appropriate there. Not the cemetery itself, but. There's, there's. Yep, 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 so. Like it's, I like back here, but it kinda connects. Back here. Uh, it's okay. This market.
Existing land use map? Existing land use map. Uh huh. So, okay. Let me see if we can see it here, right?
Uh, yeah, scroll.
Uh.
Uh, county parcels by land use code. Yeah, zoom out a little bit.
Uh huh.
Those over here too.
Uh, let me see, we are, we are. Here? Uh, let me. Oh, we have to go back again.
Well, I mean, we could use that or use the land, even if it's another metal. Because that was. There's uh, that's the word I was.
Can you show the key as well?
Key?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, there we go.
I, this is. Though we have, um, uh, really had time to set up, established for this thing. Say this is. It's absolutely south west. Technically. But, um. I don't know, I think they should. Like. You know, Walmart, mall for a lot of people, South of Walmart. So the issue with the bus now, with transportation is, in the southeast, our neighborhood. I think, and what we identified as our neighborhood, have fifty bus stop. Yay, that's exciting, don't take it away. But the issue is they all go to the same place. So if I wanna go to south, I'm going north to get south. You know what I mean? So, yeah, you gotta double back, it's not, you know, the bus stops that we have in our neighborhood are great compared to the other neighborhoods in the southeast area. But every bus in this house will take you to Park City. You can get off downtown, but you're going to Park, that's where it goes to Park City. So when we look at transportation, that's one of the things that we talk about all the time. You know, plus when you don't like. Foods. If I wanna go to Walmart, I have a long walk of fifty bus, bus stops in my neighborhood, I gotta walk all the way up to Kings. I gotta take that extra route, ride all the way into town, transfer a bus to get off, to go back down. To get.
There's that. Transfer. Transfer.
Uh, I could have walked, we sat down and did this exercise and talked about what we have, what we don't have. Fourth education, there's a lot of education, and then the southeast there is coming up. We have Texas, you know, we have. The biggest add town cap. The services that it used to offer. So they used to offer a lot of social programs. And they're no longer there. They didn't use to offer a lot of social programs, they're not there. Services that offer a lot of, that made these services, that weren't allowed to begin. You know, but different services, it's not like, it's what, underutilization, they're often helping, but they. Part of service that they give, so they try to fulfill, specialize in. Or relatively on some that, but not a lot, like one with a job, or that, that you don't like to do. Keep it. You know, like. Social service that's created again, and none of them are there, and they don't like get them. We don't have, we have Sapa. And we have the Christmas bags. But uh, they are the nonprofit organizations that are existing. We were, and I think we just established ourselves. Yes, yes. So. Uh, we had in the past and probably still in the future, but we're trying to get a home, because we've done all this stuff without having a home base. So, and if, and now it's like it takes more than it took before, so we really need a home, so. We get a home, then we will, we're not just gonna do it, just do it, we wanna be effective. Uh, we are very sustainable, we carry that gap, I'm proud to say that. But, you know, and we wanna keep going after, just don't gonna do it to do it, we wanna do it and be effective, you know, so. I'm just gonna say this. Yeah, put it down as. Yes. But, um. Some, some of the organizations, like the Knights of the uh, House of the Guard, they are now starting to. Like the work that the body teaches and serves, like our Almanack Avenue. Or the South Carolina Ports, over all these complexes, now they're starting to, I'm seeing them starting to come together and try to offer services to the resident. Which is a missed, you know, opportunity, they're there and you don't, you know. Yeah. Very serious. That too, yes.
Do you think we, maybe we should mark their redevelopment up.
Sure. Put that down there. That's an end and dolphin. End dolphin, yes. Because believe it or not, you know, and I know people vastly, state, county, family, municipality, people with the Knights of the. When it comes to the internet and having access, or when it comes to the community, it's very. I mean, you know, like have Comcast, YouTube free, or use the internet, or nine nine five. Feel a lot of other people that needed, uh, for grandparents and, you know, that. So, yeah, so there's a lot. Good night. So anyway, yeah, so, um, and they don't, they don't have this. Where Comcast offers in discount to other areas, but they don't offer. So that's not. But, okay.
You know, so like really has to the larger system, where there's. Hogsaw. What are it's that they have? It's like, like that. But I feel like one of the best effects is like the. Essentially, it could also.
Like if we could be back, it's all a good thing, a very good ideal, I mean, it's two. Tell them. It's not like we might really have. So we thought, you know, maybe we wanna open up another rehab center, they had years ago, people found. I mean, not that, you know, rehab centers are needed, but we have more than our fair share. Like we have. So we have a lot of facilities already, you know, rehab all opened in this area. So it's something that, you know, we talk about all the time, it's not every time people, but it's better. Other than rehab center. We don't want you to get there. But yes, if you do get there, we want help for you, but we don't want you to see that and say. Park and Brisbane's Trail Connections. So. So for green, we were thinking. So for green, we were thinking, I'm working in school where habitat the community, we're gonna build like seven, eight, nine, or something. Everyone kept telling me all part of the. And when you look at this out, yes, we have the alley park way down there, we have reservoir park, typically, and there's uh, with the sigh. There is not a park within this out there. So even planning activity, you know, there's not a park here. You know, I mean, we have neighborhoods in the city that got four dog parks, that we do parks, so. Yeah, we got, and they have the walking trail down. Just. So we thought that some of that space would be good. So it's where the end, we see, I gotta, yeah, so the end in Claremont Avenue, I think it's your thing. Where Happy, Happy, yeah, right, in Washington. Oh, that's probably what's, yeah, 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 'cause I'm like, where is Judy Anna Street, that's at the end of the end. Okay, so where, this is Judy Anna? Yeah, it has to be, because there's, so we're looking, maybe not there, that's not around this area. Okay, and that would be some green space or like a park, you know.
Is there, is there a way to share that?
You know, they have signs, you cannot use the green grass, no. Yeah. This is Roberto Clemente Park, which is now fenced off, they've gotta get a key to get in there to use it. Because they put artificial turf down or something, and they don't want, so it's not even open space anymore. Neil Byrne, Joe Jackson, Top Hot. It's, it's a top hot, yeah.
One of them is you.
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanna say, there is one person that watched online, gave me a phone call, said that they could not hear anything that was being said. Of course, this is one of the limitations of trying to get around a map and talk with each other, um, which is more conducive to, to conversation, and I feel like this has been really productive. I am also just apologizing for those who are watching, of course, we're holding a legal meeting here because we're all together in a public space where the public can access, but. Unfortunately, our streaming capabilities and technology fall short in these kinds of situations, so I will be talking to our, um, our technological staff here at City Hall, and we can try to figure out a better way to. Make sure that all of your voices are heard and on, um, and on the streaming system as well, so apologies for the inconveniences there.
Kids that got hit right there on this intersection.
Is there a stop, stop sign or anything?
There's just four-way stop sign here.
Is it a visibility issue?
It's a speed issue.
No way.
Patient.
What about these green street?
Right here, this is bad. And, and, just one of these here, that intersection, yeah. And South End can speak of it because in the past, there were no stop signs from King Street down to Duke Street. So it was.
Yeah, I lived right here.
That is bad.
Several years, and that is awful, I hate the connection off of Plum here, I guess that's.
Plum and John, yep, John and Plum, that is, and this, this here is really bad coming down, 'cause it's a two-way. And it's really parking on both sides, it's.
This is always too short from Duke Street going down to this, to that intersection by the towers, I feel like that light just goes like that.
Yeah, and it's just, like, there's no pedestrian, like, crossing here, really, not one here. This is awful for cars and people.
It's blind.
Yeah.
And they're gonna take the medium strip out, that's down the middle of Duke Street, that's in a plan to be removed, right? Yeah, yeah.
How do the kids generally get to school, do they walk?
They walk.
They walk. So, yeah. So it's kinda bad, we have kids that walk from. Here, this end, all the way over to Price School, which is in the southwest.
My wife works there.
Yeah, yeah.
Their current footprint is ridiculous, they have kids from like down there.
Down, yep, to walk up, and they just changed them boundaries, ah, okay, yep, so.
So what are each of these changes?
So just traffic calming, pedestrian improvements, I would, two through eight.
Something should happen down here, because if all of this gets addressed, that makes all this worse. And this is a large area that does not address any, you know, so Ann Street is a main corridor.
Yeah.
So you would almost have to adjust that, and with improvements.
Yeah, 'cause it's just four-way stop sign, there's no lights, right?
It's only four-way stops, there's no lights.
So lights down Ann Street, you think would be good?
I mean, maybe at the main intersections, like Ann and Judy Anna.
Well, at least improved pedestrian.
Improved, improved, yeah, so, coming down this way down.
It's a pretty wide street.
Yeah, it is.
It is a wide street, with a setback on the houses going down here.
And there's always a lot of pedestrians, the traffic.
Lot of pedestrians, lot of foot traffic.
It's pretty.
No, it's not the parking. We do have them coming here.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of street trees on Ann, correct, right?
Well, we do have a lot of trees.
A lot of older trees.
Older trees, they need improved, and. I'm not gonna go there right now, I'm gonna stay focused, because I hate the way they, I was literally gonna take pictures today, because down on, um, Orange and Lime. They had the tree people out cutting the branches all nicely from the wires. If you come up Dolphin Street, we got bees like this cutting the trees with the two branches hanging down, it's like, it don't even look like a tree, and it's like. Don't tell me you can't do better, I'm afraid the one branch is gonna fall and it's hanging so low, and I'm like, that's a city council comment. What are you doing, Tree Commission, go look at some of these trees, they do bring beauty to the neighborhood, besides just serving the environment.
Should we turn the document camera back on, or?
Sure.
Oh, that's a good deal.
Unfortunately, on the streaming, you can't see this screen, like, at all, it appears white on YouTube.
Oh, because of the.
Yeah, it's not a great situation, um, our, our technology needs to be advanced in here, but at least we have streaming, right? Pre- previous to tonight, the complaint was that we didn't have streaming, so now we have streaming, but it's, it's not quite there yet.
Um, do we wanna move on to Exercise Seven, and then loop back if there's anything that we think of? So Exercise Seven is, uh, big ideas, and it's not just specific to this neighborhood. Um, so as a group, discuss projects that are most needed in the city, or would have the greatest impact in Lancaster. Uh, use this space to tell us the top three projects or initiatives that the city should incorporate into the comprehensive plan, please be as specific as possible. Yeah, and I, I mean flood management along the river too, that came up tonight, so I think, yeah, absolutely, we can continue to carry that torch.
I mean, we got to, I was, I was at Sheetz on the Fourth of July, and I started talking to somebody about, um, it what, like, so I'm not planning stuff. And then I had mentioned the stormwater over by Second Lock Road, and someone was like, yeah, you can see her. Darling, I really like your idea of technology, and I, I still, I think there's such an opportunity for just more. Knowledge of like coding and things that you can do remotely now that pay really well for people. Um, you know, I have a friend, he does not have any kind of advanced degree in computers, he went to a coding boot camp for three months, and he's, you know, making very good money. Working in the tech sector, um, and I feel like, you know, there are kids who, you know, they're on their phones all day, we could probably get them to somehow get better trained, and I, I just wonder whether there's an opportunity for like technology training of some kind. I mean, I don't know if Thaddeus Stevens could take that up, or.
I think that's a great idea, especially with Thaddeus being in this quadrant, like, really focusing on.
They have Pedro Vera over there, and he was superintendent of school district, so he would definitely be up for it.
Yeah, and just like, skill training, workforce development for, like, children that live in this neighborhood, I think would be a great partnership, because they're right there.
Thaddeus hasn't really expanded the footprint into the neighborhood, right?
With South End, they have, they, they are more now, you know.
Because they're building those houses too, like, they're definitely.
Yeah, they're building the duplexes, that's really big, but they didn't really have land to build, so. They got it, and that was helpful, so they were kinda like forced to be outside of the city, I think they build a lot in the city. Yeah.
So what about like, I mean, kind of referencing the comment I said earlier, like, your facility, you're trying to build, what if the library, like, a partnership between like, the library. Annexing it to neighborhoods, Thaddeus Stevens running a program, and just like, neighborhood organizations being able to, you know, facilitate their functional use around this space, like.
So like a community hub for?
And, and yeah, we can think broad, I mean, we don't necessarily have to have the whole partnership baked tonight, but I think a community hub that helps educate people about technology.
The, the, the community hub that would help, yes.
'Cause that could help address your, what you were saying about the social services leaving the neighborhood too, if there was a hub space.
And, um, and I really think, I, we had thought about even the stock market, because I think kids would be intrigued by that, I guess I went to Drexel and went in and seen the ticker tape room and everything, and I'm like. I could just see, my mind went to young kids getting to see this and learn this.
Yeah.
You know, we don't teach them any of that kinda stuff, they even draw their interest to say, this is a field you can go in, we don't offer that anywhere within our, you know, community, so I do see like. You know, definitely stuff to educate your children technology-wise, definitely, definitely. That would be good, and I just wanna adjust, I don't know if this goes here, but I think something that should be on the top list is parking, or is that something different?
We can, no, this.
Uh, that's something big, okay, we need to adjust parking.
Do we, but, do we think that adding more parking is the answer, or do we think encouraging people to drive less and walk?
But I think all of that.
So transportation.
I think all of that plays a role. Yes, I think it's gonna take a little bit of all of that, less people driving, better transportation, if it's easier for me to get on the bus and get where I'm going. And cost less, rather than trying to figure out how I'm gonna pay to get them down, if we're thinking twenty years down the road. What are we talking about, electric cars in neighborhoods like this with parking, where are our charging stations though? That's gonna be a challenge, but it's something I think we need to start thinking about and looking at. Are people gonna say, I want my own that have parking spots and have their own charger, or are there gonna be chargers available? Through the city, is that something we need to put, a charging station? Or when I think about, um, jobs, and I think about, um, I'm thinking about batteries for these electric cars, they wanna, you know, you're not just gonna, a place that would. They're gonna, you know, you're not just gonna, there a place that would sell batteries, so, you know, I think about that and adjusting electric cars and. I don't know, but I know there's gonna, there're gonna be things that are gonna be needed in the future.
Some more related to electric charging, um, so, there's a car on. East Orange, over by Saint Anthony's Church, that I, it's a BMW, I always see it plugged in. And my question is, does anybody know if that's like something they've like got permitted, or is that just something they do on their own?
And you might need a bu- maybe a building permit to install it, but that's, that's it.
Or do you mean that is he using it by permission?
Like, is it?
Or is he just like jumping in and worshiping?
Facilitated through the city, or is that just something?
It's not the city, I mean, there, there's a whole culture around, like, you can create a, um, an outlet on the outside of your house. Put it on a map, someone from Idaho could be visiting and they're looking for charging stations, and they're like, oh, this house over on such block, I'm allowed to go over and plug it. So I mean, there, there are resources out there, and I know there are people in Lancaster that participate in those, and it's just a crowdsourcing way of charging your car. You don't pay for it, any, at all, you know?
The only reason I asked is because I was the, the Lancaster Towns of Planning Commission, and someone brought that up as if it was like. Something that was facilitated and like permitted, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, the city, the Parking Authority has installed charging stations in garages, public park garages. The city has not, I, I don't think we've installed any on our properties, and we've not permitted any in the public right-of-way. If someone wants to put it on their private property, they just go through a building permit to do that.
So if you're living in a row house, it's built up to the street front. Then how do you charge your car at your house?
Yes.
This is a problem. Yeah, I mean, i- if you wanna get an electric car and you're attached on both sides and have no rear access, it's a challenge. I, and I know someone actually over on Vine Street that is in that situation, and what he does is he stretches a cord out from his front yard, from his front house.
Probably not the safest.
And I, that's, of course, it's not. For his car, that's funny, um, so yeah, it's, it's a challenge, and we're looking at different opportunities. Um, if that's something that you all wanna, you know, contribute to.
I mean, I just think if we're, uh, we should at least talk about what's gonna happen, because I think that's gonna come sooner than later.
I would agree, yeah, I think other municipalities are kind of, but I'm saying that reference to one, I think at least one municipality is kind of looking for. Other actions to be done so that we all have a sense of what we're doing, not just here, but in the county.
I know that the, or at least I haven't heard anything from County Planning Commission about that. And none of the municipalities that, like, we work in at the Redevelopment Authority at the county level have ordinances. That I'm aware of.
And.
Do, do you know it's Lancaster Township actually, they, do they have an ordinance in place? Okay, it was just something they were discussing, or?
There, there is one member, I think it's called, he's very adamant that like, we, like, we being them, like, we need to start working on an ordinance. But there's nothing to go on.
Okay.
And so I think it would, it would be a good thing for the city to start considering how to optimize this.
Pres- precedents other places, okay.
It's pretty fun of the street lighting, uh.
Oh, yeah, good, good thinking.
There, there is actually, there's a startup company that transforms light poles into charging stations, uh. And I met with him a while back, but the city at that time was not ready to get into public right-of-way charging stations. But there are, there are options out there, and I, I know that, uh, DPW has told me that they would like to see recommendations through the Conference of Plan. To do that sort of thing, so this is a perfect.
Moment to plug the, uh, Regentall or?
Oh, sure, yeah, um, so for the Conference of Plan, we're hosting, uh, sessions on climate change. And how conference of planning can address climate change, so we've got two more, we're, we're holding four sessions with a local organization called Regentall. Um, we've had two, one in person and one online, both very well attended, and we've got another one this Thursday at six, I think it's.
There's a paper in our packets, yeah.
Tomorrow at six, uh, that is online, so you're welcome to join that by Zoom. Uh, actually, it's at seven, I'll, I'll send you all, uh, the information, actually, and then next week, there's another one in person.
On the fourteenth, right?
So, um, yeah, it's, uh, that's a Thursday too. Yeah, so we're asking people for strategies on how to address climate change and energy issues in the city.
And behind South End Street, the two hundred block, there's a city-owned parking lot. And we keep throwing around the idea of putting a parking garage there. Uh, we were told it would be too expensive, um.
Where's that?
Well, Anne Street, which is the two hundred block, so it has to be up here. Yep, and so it's right behind.
Oh, right here?
We don't want houses there because it's a lot owned by the city, it is, uh.
I think that was an early green infrastructure project.
It was, one of the very first ones, they did three of them, and this was one, Mifflin Street. And then over there, um, behind Dolphin Street was the third one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, behind Lime, Lime Street, but, um, you know, we don't know if it's very feasible. But we believe anything's feasible now, but we think that a parking garage would, sitting here in this neighborhood. Because we always say, go to the parking garage, but I live here, the closest parking garage to me.
Is Vine, is it the Vine Street, or?
Probably King and Lime, but.
Probably King by Mike Sterling's office. Yeah, that's probably the closest, but I think realizing that we need to address parking and. You know, it's not gonna do a whole lot, but it's gonna start, and you can start with some chargers for people to get. And the one thing I just wanna mention about the, um, light poles, you know the poles are only on one side of the street. So if we do the light pole connection for the cars, everyone has electric car guy live on the other side of the street now. But think about that because the poles only go down one side of the street. And I think that's an issue if we're talking about safety, I don't know where that falls in, and addressing lighting in the neighborhoods and the walking.
I would, I would assume the South Duke Street plan has lighting addressed.
Both sides of the street, I think, like, as well as King Street, when they redid, redid King Street, they put lights on both sides. But in the neighborhood itself, you have lights on one side of the street with telephone poles. So that's something that in the future, we probably would wanna address, so I don't know where that goes, but.
Do we have our big ideas?
I think so. Yeah, transportation.
Transportation, definitely.
Could we open the downtown?
Uh, I think, let's just call it, cause it's almost eight.
Yeah, that's fine. I think the commission doesn't wanna do a downtown exercise tonight, which is totally fine. Uh, and maybe for the next meeting, we can do the Northwest, I wanna make sure we definitely hit the neighborhoods. But wi- with, if we meet, uh, the next time in July twentieth, which we will, Mosaic is on the agenda, I really hope that you can all make it.
Tony's favorite project.
Yeah, I know, we need to set a meeting with John Swanson, okay, send that email. Um, and then in August, if we meet the first time in August, then that means we can get the downtown and Northwest.
Yeah.
Possibly even do the extensions in the middle of August.
Yeah, cause I, I don't know, I think we could probably do the downtown and annexes in the same, within the same meeting.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I will be here twentieth, I've already put on calendar, the first week of August.
Okay.
So the Mosaic project's coming up the next meeting?
Yep, July twentieth, alright.
Your favorite.
So.
Yes, yes.
Did you prepare your list?
So, at seven thirty-eight PM on Wednesday, July sixth, I will, um. Call the, the meeting to, to close, yeah, adjourn, oh, I don't need that. No, we have the microphone here, it's still on, so I don't have to relocate tonight.
Thank you, everyone, for your input, yeah, this is fun. I'll be in the same, I'll be here next meeting, but not the meeting yet, okay, so August four, or five, next year.
Darling birds, South End concerned neighbors, I used to meet you, you heard of South End concerned neighbors?
Uh, yeah, she's, we're, we're forming the way, so, yeah, I mean, we'll see, she's like gotten, uh, she's starting to get a little nervous because we've had so many friends.